December 9th, 2019. Dawn related to Lord of Prayer.
Heavenly Father, we bow before you today, Lord, to thank you for this day. Thank you for all the blessings, Lord, that you blessed us with. We thank you for our positions, Lord, and pray that you'd be with us as we go into this meeting. Help us, just guide us, Lord, and help us to make the right decisions for you and for our people. And help this town Hackleburg, Lord, to grow and prosper. And pray, Heavenly Father, that you'd bless the sick people out there, so many of them, just be with them and comfort them. Heal them if it could be your will. And pray that you'd bless all the poor people who go into the holidays, Lord, just be with them and help them. And we ask now, Lord, that you'd just forgive us all what we've had of you, and we'll give you the praise for it all. Christ's name we pray. Amen. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Need a motion to call the meeting to order?
Motion.
Second?
Yeah.
All in favor? Need a motion and a second to tell everyone what's on the agenda. Second? Yeah. All in favor? Clerk to read the minutes from the November 18th meeting?
The Hackleburg Town Council met in special session on November 18th, 2019 at 6:30 PM. Mayor Coburn asked for a motion to call the meeting to order. Councilmember Wigginton made a motion and was seconded by councilmember Kevin Barlow. Councilmember Dylan Donald led everyone in prayer and then the pledge was said by all. The attendance is listed below. Mayor Coburn stated that the meeting was open for the transaction of business. A motion was made by councilmember Don Barlow and seconded by councilmember Wigginton to cover only the items on the agenda. Voting was as follows: all a's, no n's. The mayor asked the clerk to review the minutes from the November 11th, 2019 meeting. After reviewing, councilmember Lawley stated that there was a part that needed to be amended in the fourth paragraph. It states that Mayor Coburn made the motion, but actually it was made by councilmember Wigginton. A motion was made by Don Barlow and seconded by Kevin Barlow to accept the minutes as amended. Voting was as follows: all a's, no n's. A financial statement was given to the mayor and council by the clerk to review. A motion was made by councilmember Kevin Barlow and seconded by councilmember Wigginton to accept as presented. Voting was as follows: all a's, no n's. The clerk presented a check register for the council to look over and approve. After reviewing, a motion was made by councilmember Don Barlow and seconded by councilmember Wigginton to pay our bills when due. Voting was as follows: all a's, no n's. Attorney Hunter Fox was in attendance and wanted to address the mayor and council. He stated that the ordinance that was not passed at the November 11th, 2019 special meeting was very crucial and needed to be passed in order for the conveying of the Hackleburg market deed to be in line with state code and to ensure that the town Hackleburg has no financial ties to the market. Ordinance 2019-11-18 determines the town's remaining present or reversionary interest, including the first right of refusal found in the minutes of the town council meeting of September 12th, 2019, in the market property as surplus and of no use to the municipality or the public, and further grants Mayor Derek Coburn authority to convey the aforementioned interests to Chris Bozeman and Philip Bozeman. A motion was made by councilmember Don Barlow and seconded by councilmember Kevin Barlow to pass ordinance 2019-11-18. Voting was as follows: all a's, no n's. The mayor and council looked over an estimate from Barry Delaney of Bean's Cleaning for stripping and waxing the gym floor at the recreation center. Mr. Delaney's estimate of up to $900, but not to exceed $900, included stripping the oak wax, one coat of new wax, material, and labor. A motion was made by councilmember Lawley and seconded by councilmember Don Barlow to have Bean's Cleaning do this job. Voting was as follows: all a's, no n's. The mayor and council discussed hiring a temporary driver for the NACOG van. Doc Hudson is having to take some time off for medical issues. Mayor Coburn stated that Ronald Delrod, who works part-time for the town, would be interested in the job. A motion was made by councilmember Don Barlow and seconded by councilmember Lawley to hire Ronald Delrod to temporarily drive the NACOG van until Doc Hudson can return. Voting was as follows: all a's, no n's. The mayor and council discussed ordering 12 LED lights for the gym at the recreation center. The price on the lights are $160 each, which is a great deal for councilmember Lawley. A motion was made by councilmember Lawley and seconded by councilmember Kevin Barlow to purchase these lights. Voting was as follows: all a's, no n's. The mayor discussed the heat situation in the gym. It is working now, but more parts have to be ordered. True Homes allow the town to use a scissor limb to access the heaters. Councilmember Lawley stated that there may be a gas leak going forward and will need to be checked for that. Mayor Coburn wanted a list of all people who have keys to the gym and take them up to change the locks. There are so many out at this time of basketball practices that it would be best to wait for the season to be over at the end of February to change the locks. The mayor wanted to publicly thank Steve Pickens for delivering the scissor limb from True Homes to and from the gym. The town always appreciates your willingness to help. The mayor and council discussed hiring someone to do our IT work. Trevor Hardy with Next Generation Computers has submitted a quote for his services. Also, we have someone else who is interested in giving us a quote. A motion was made by councilmember Lawley and seconded by councilmember Wigginton to table this to the next meeting in order to get other quotes. Voting was as follows: all a's, no n's. Mayor Coburn advised the council about the grant money that was awarded the town to help pave roads. It was notified that ADCA has awarded the town with $85,000. This will go along with the $250,000 that has been promised by Aldott, $30,000 from the county, and $72,000 of town funds. The mayor stated that he would keep everyone updated on this in the coming days. The mayor informed the council that the fireworks stand had been removed. The clerk provided an updated budget report for the mayor and council. The numbers that were decided on in the budget meeting of November 4th were inserted and the remainder of the budget numbers were discussed. The clerk inserted those numbers and made each council member a copy for them to review. Any changes to be made will be discussed at the next meeting and a vote will take place to pass the budget. The mayor and council discussed one-time raises for the employees of the town. Last year, full-time employees were given $400 each, and part-time workers that have worked a substantial amount of time for the year will receive $150 each. After a discussion, a motion was made by councilmember Kevin Barlow and seconded by Don Barlow to give each employee a one-time raise for Christmas and allow the mayor to determine the employees that will be considered for the part-time raise. Voting was as follows: all a's, no n's. There being no further business to come before the council. A motion was made by councilmember Kevin Barlow and seconded by councilmember Lawley to adjourn.
Thank you, Doris. All right, everybody's heard the reading of the minutes. Any corrections or questions? Tavi, me and you talked about a date for Delaney to do this for?
Yeah.
And you think right after Christmas?
It'd be best if you could get it right after Christmas because we start the lead jamboree and there'll be a lot of them wanting to come back in right after that to start back practicing. So, you know, if he's available.
Yeah.
But it needs to be done within that two-week period. In that way, we'll put a note on the door and I'll send a text message out to all the coaches and inform them that we're going to be down for possibly three days.
On the LED lights, we get those installed. They look great.
Yeah.
Lots of them are really good.
And heat's working too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is this IT on? Is it on the agenda?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll discuss it. We'll get over to it. When we borrowed the lift, Chris and them couldn't get the heat working. That's when they found out they needed more parts. So, they had to rent a lift to come back that day. But what we had to do, we had to do, we had to get heat. We have heat and we have light. Wayne, do you want that just to be? You want your bid to be under your name or Pikeville Productions?
My name.
Okay. All the town employees wanted me to thank y'all for the one-time raise. They said they really appreciated it. They talked about it. So, they want to thank before we get to that. All right, need a motion to accept the minutes is read.
Sound wave.
Second.
Darren? All in favor? Item number four, financial statement. Well, here, this is for the fellow financial statement. Then we'll go to that other one. You have to pay the bills.
We still don't have the occupational tax reserve. There's still $18,000 that's not showing up in that. Where's that at?
Where we can discuss that?
Under?
But last time y'all wanted to put it in the general. That's what Darren and I had talked about, and I didn't put it on because of that.
Yeah, we...
Have we got that on there to discuss that, about removing the occupational tax?
Well, it will come up in a discussion we have to have. Anyway, total of all accounts, $444,196. And school tax, $22,342. And reserve school tax with that, it's $59,334.
Yeah, but if we took a half a cent out, then that's not showing on this ledger.
It's up here.
Where would it be at?
Grocery tax fund up there in the second.
Okay. And so the, and then the other 18, is it already in the general fund? Or where is it?
It's in the school tax. The 18,000?
Yeah.
It's not yet.
So, it's not, then that's not your total balance. It's more than that.
Well, I was going to put the 18 on here, and I didn't go back and do it because we could discuss that.
There will be 18 more thousand.
Okay. So, that's what you increase our numbers, what I'm saying. Okay.
Yes, it will show up extra 18,000. General fund right now, $106,222. Sanitation fund, $15,744. Fire department, $7,0965. Three male tax for the fire department, $24,245. Police fund, $4,0132. For a total of $158,309. Do we want to continue with the grocery tax fund or just let it ride for a year or so and say we're all right? Yeah, want to go back to the...
How about we continue with it just in case something happened?
That's fine.
Well, what we were looking at is it's all further down in our...
Yeah, closing down.
The grant, no, the grant money, because we got to do matching fund to do the roads. And then what I had calculated that when we talked the last meeting was counting the $10,000 that we agreed on in October and the $18,000, that would make it 28 plus that. That would help us cover that 20%. And we was going to throw that into the street. Into the street, that would raise that value up.
Either way, there's going to have to be some money.
Right.
For the matching money. And then there's going to have to be some more money too that we'll talk about.
Well, see, we can use that gas tax fund and the street fund on that.
Yeah, because some of them, we're going to be repairing.
Yeah.
And putting in coves and getting ready for the...
It's working on existing paved roads and bridges, so it gives you permission to use all of it if you want to, right?
That's right.
So, we'll be okay on that. All right, need a motion to accept the financial statement?
Motion, it's second.
Dawn? Second?
Second.
Darren? All in favor? Item number five, paying the bills?
We can't say that too.
No, we have to pay bills.
I wrote the checks already because it was getting on in the month, so I've just had registered.
You have no option there now.
You have no choice, I don't think. $1,000 is where we bought the LEDs from.
Who's Alan Cantrell?
Our attorney.
Is that your attorney that...
She's the attorney.
I thought that was. Is this the money that we had paid for the market?
Tony's our attorney.
Well, no, but is this the money that we had to pay for the market?
No.
What is...
This is when she had to come in for the end of the year.
Oh, the end of the year stuff? Okay. Does that still have to show up? I know it's not on our thing, you know, did we ever get that resolved? That bill that we got, what, $9,000? Good, okay.
What's that $100 dollars for?
Chad, you know big items from O'Reilly's?
No.
It's probably a month, month and a half worth of it.
But that could be multiple things, and it's in bills, and it's a total bill sum that is.
Yeah, it is a total. It's not one item.
I bought two batteries for that pump truck, which has been the biggest item that I've bought lately. And I was always working on fixing the pump and the previous ones. We paid the car, that last one.
I'm sorry, what?
The band cord.
We paid the car off.
That's the last one.
So, they are all free and clear.
Their police cars are paid for.
Chad, clears.
Who put the lights up? Fitcher now?
No.
Yes.
I thought he was going to. So, Fitcher put them up.
I thought he was...
I thought Chad was having to put them up.
No.
Okay.
And the gym, yeah, Chris put them up.
Well, they all ain't putting on their...
They have...
They had a bill jetted on the way.
They done the lighting and the heat.
They've been working on it on the night of Christmas parade. There's still one heater over there that they're waiting on park.
Is that first one when you walk in?
Uh, one over.
Okay. Are we going to have to bring the scissor limb? You'll have to bring it back in to work on that?
Chad, I think we can run tomorrow one again.
Yeah, that's fine. Is it possible, since we're already, you know, we discussed it, but jump back in on this, is there's one thermostat that is really in a bad location. When a bulb hits it, it knocks the whole thing off. And you know the one I'm talking about is on the back wall and it's right in the line. Could we possibly get that conduit moved on that other wall where the other three are located? Now, this costly, we're having a...
Or have Chad and Bill something to protect it.
So, you got to have covers over, but I ain't got no keys to them. And I don't know, Steve says he ain't never had a key to them. So, those covers, they won't even stay on.
They won't stay on them. That's why...
If we have a key for them, you can lock them on there.
Right. And they fall off, is what happens, because it don't matter. And that didn't happen. That happened when we were having to loan it out to the school and stuff, so.
But, yeah.
Yeah, we did. We came...
We can look at it. Just look at it and see if it's possible.
Yeah.
Because it is in a bad location.
Okay.
But it's been there from original design of the bill.
All right. Any more questions on paying the bills? Need a motion to pay the bills? Tavi? Second. Kevin? All in favor? Yeah, everybody. All right, old business, we're going to, we talked with Wayne last time, and I missed his message he sent me. So, we didn't, we didn't think he'd sent us one, but he did. So, we will, I'll get all that information and we can decide what we want to do. But we have to have some IT help with, I mean, we're just having too much trouble.
So, you need a motion to table this whole business?
Yeah, we may have to handle it before our next meeting, but I'll call everybody in.
Motion.
Okay. All right. New business, does everybody know?
Second. You second?
Kevin, please.
All right, Tavi and Tavi, who?
I don't think you're going to have to make a motion. That's second, excuse me.
My bad. All in favor? All right, new business, item number one. As everybody knows, Jeremy has resigned as police chief and took a job with the housing authority. And we have not met since his last day of November 29th, 2019. And everybody's got a letter that he, he sent in, was resigned. Y'all remember that? But anyway, it is some basic letter. He thanks the mayor and the council for the opportunity. So, we just need a motion to accept his resignation.
He can't do that, so I'll make a motion to accept resignation.
Do the second.
Police chief.
Second.
All in favor? And Jeremy done a good job. He, I think he, well, there led us with class and dignity, brought a good perception to the police department. So, he is to be commended on the job he done while he was chief. So, we appreciate the work he done. All right, item number two, well, we need to accept that. My bad. Need a motion to accept his resignation.
We already done that.
Right. Sorry.
They done voted, though. You good to go.
Have we done a vote?
Everybody...
Tavi just wanted to hurry and I've been waiting on that.
Everybody voted on it, except Eugene, because he has to...
Sure, he doesn't. I was like that. Okay, item number two, discuss police chief job opening. Since the resignation of Jeremy, the assistant chief, Jonathan, he has stepped in and filled in that role. So, he has been the acting chief. When it comes to hiring this position, we kind of have three options, in my opinion. We can promote from within. Like I said, Jonathan has been the acting chief. Number two, we can post the job opening for two weeks and see what kind of interest we get. Number three, we can look at making a contract labor hire. We've had a person inquire about that. Skyline, y'all?
Who in large much contract labor?
Kenny Hallmark about the contract labor. And far as posting, I don't know that we're going to be able to. We might, but one of the requirements is they have to live in Hackleburg because they're on call 447. So, we can put fillers out, that'll be fine, but there could possibly be somebody that would be willing to move to Hackleburg for that, but...
What kind of deal did Kenny propose?
Kenny can make, he cannot make over $32,500 in a year.
So, he doesn't propose nothing, he just...
Well, that's what, he proposed that's what he would do it for. He would get no benefits.
But that's still $50 or something in there?
Well, standard...
And Jeremy's up in Jordan retirement.
The standard labor of what we will pay will be 35, 360. Retirement will be 4805, insurance 4644. If we were to do that, the town could save about $12,300. You know, I guess could be used for incentive raises to town employees, but that's just three options we have.
What kind of requirements? I mean, before we make a hire or figure out which one of these we want, which route we go, what kind of requirements do we want? I mean, they'll have some type of...
It's up to us, but yeah, in my opinion, they need to have at least five years on the job. They need to be in some kind of supervisor role, assistant chief.
Five years? What's the net value on that one?
No, they've got to be a policeman for five years. But they do have to have experience in being a supervisor.
Yeah, all your force got sergeants, lieutenants, and captains on the roof. It may not be making a full order in there, but they got responsibility.
Right.
So, that is a requirement, and then did Jeremy have to live here in Hackleburg?
No.
Yeah.
Well, he was assistant chief. Yeah, and your assistant chief is your supervisor for when somebody else is out. So, it's like you want to have a person backfill off of that, and it's for training purposes if they can promote within the county. So, you had Jeremy that was the backup for Kenny, and he promoted up. So, next is Jonathan. And Jonathan's been acting in that role for how long? Three weeks now? But he's been in, he's been in the role for over a year now? So, my opinion, if he's willing to, he should be, have the opportunity to promote us within the county or the town, because that's the progressionary period. And if we do need to backfill policemen, then it could be an opportunity that you could probably do a contract, but not as a chief.
No, no, Jonathan, if we want to promote him...
No, I'm talking about Kenny, if he's willing to do part-time or something.
Yeah.
But I think it needs to go within the ranks, in my opinion.
With that, I'd do like a 30, 60, 90-day evaluation.
Yeah.
And if he felt good about the position and we felt good about it, then in 90 days...
Yeah, that'll be a promotion period.
But also, what he's got to understand, the next election, if it's a new mayor, he can be ousted.
It is an appointed position.
It ain't nothing guaranteed, Jonathan.
But under the, under the county's, some kind of police labor thing, when he's promoted within, he can't be ousted. He can only be demoted.
That's correct. It's the merit system.
Yeah, the merit system in Marion County.
No, we can't...
That's what I'm saying, is if he's promoted, he can be, he's just demoted.
But if a new mayor and council can't.
That's their last three, one privilege, I got it, promote the new police chief, I don't care if it's been in there.
Right.
Man, I know it can't be far, but, yeah.
But a police chief that's brought in can be let go.
Yeah.
Right.
According to the, the merit system.
Yeah, correct.
If anybody has any comments personally, like, you know, like have something they wanna. Say about a good name and, uh, well.
I'd still hope, you know, I, if Jonathan wants to do the, do it, do the thirty, sixty, ninety day evaluation, I'd still post it and see. Cause you, you know it's useful. Um, cause what if you get in there sixty days and say, well, you know, I just don't like this paperwork.
And that's something.
Then we're not just left flat-footed, we got something to go back on.
That's where I feel that.
And that's something, I was just asking what Kenny had proposed, but in my opinion, as us sitting here. And Kenny, he was a great servant, and I mean, he done, went well above and beyond, and I hate to. See Jeremy go, he got a better opportunity, but what we gotta look at now is the future of this town. And you police chief basically is the hull of your operation. They protect the community, they do so people don't know what goes on. And I mean, we gotta look at the future. I mean, I don't, I know Jonathan's got a long time in, I don't know how long he's planning on staying or whatever, but. Whatever action we take, we need to look at down the road, when we're not sitting here.
Well, that's what I was.
We need to bring somebody in.
What is the, what do we require, you know, I don't, I really don't know all the requirements.
So what you said we need to do, that way he would allow.
When we promoted, when we promoted.
It's his time to talk, you can't just butt in on him.
I was not, I was asking, he said something. When we promoted Jeremy, we didn't have a break-in period, we sent him straight in there. I think the man needs an opportunity and do a program, you know, I agree, if he gets, and now here's what happens. He accepts the position, he's held to it, unless he puts the resignation in same position. So if we think that you would prefer doing, I agree with him on the ninety day rotation to get him. Hey, he might get in there and say, man, I hate this, I wanna go back on the route. But that gives him an out. And then that gives us an opportunity to either advertise or do a contract or something at. But progression period, he should have an opportunity to see if he.
Well, in my, in my opinion, Jonathan has done a good job filling in, in the role. Now, the chief is the face of the police department, you know, the. It's just, it is, you know that.
And they basically handle more business really than the mayor and council, because everybody goes to them.
No, they don't.
What problem? Yeah, they do.
If you come to town every once in a while, you'll see.
I agree, they handle a lot, but, uh.
They handle a lot, if they don't handle a lot, more than the mayor and the council.
I wouldn't say more, but they are.
They, they deal with stuff you don't even know about.
I mean, we did, they don't know about, you may not, but I do. I'm dealing with a lot of stuff with the business of the town.
And what's that?
I don't have to go into detail with that, if you'll come up here, you'll find out.
Well, I do, but you run off, it ain't never discussed.
Yeah.
I can't.
Yeah.
Make an appointment.
The, Darren made a good point. Do need to understand that in, in that position, like Darren said earlier, it is a twenty-four seven job. It does require that you cannot have a second job because of those guidelines. And whoever, you know, understands that, because that's where you get into the issues.
That's an attorney general opinion, I mean, that ain't, that ain't our rule.
That's right.
That's not ours.
Sent down by the state.
I mean, I was gonna say, I just, the chief, whoever gets this job, to understand that this is what. Cause I, when Jeremy got it, took, I, I thought, well, he'll be as good as you could ask for, and he was. But, you know, I didn't really get into really thinking about what all the requires, you know, what all we require out of that person. And he did everything that I could see that we would require, but what about the next one, you know, next one? I just wanna make sure they understand what they're getting into, because.
There's the requirements in the handbook that, you know, they have to go by, but just off the top, they, they've gotta live here. They've gotta have experience in supervising. And, um. You know, I, I, I laid out the three options. I think Jonathan's done a good job, time he's been on here. I think Kenny would do a good job, and I, I don't know who might would sign up for it, but. That, that, to me, is my job, is to give you all the three options of what we can do here.
Whatever we do, we're gonna have to figure out a way to get the rate up for the, our, our officers. Because we're losing, if you think about since we've been in here, the officers that we've hired, and, you know, they're just coming and going and that. And I know they've been offered good opportunities once, state trooper. But we're not keeping them, I mean, that's one thing that I noticed.
But nobody else is, is.
Policeman.
It's like Jeremy, you know, losing him, I, it's cheap.
Well, everybody, everybody that's left here has left for, like, either game order from state trooper, supervisor for that.
They have, I agree, so what, more of it.
Yeah, but when you get some, get that monetary contract, fixing to go down the road for three dollar hour raise, I'll review a hundred ten percent.
I'm not saying.
We also paid a lot more in the bigger towns.
And they'd be paying triple that, for real.
We got plenty of money, they need to just go out there.
We would, but we are.
We gotta find them.
We're, we're paying.
Did I ask?
You can have to do it thirteen dollars, huh?
They can patch, patch potholes for that.
Well, you ain't not gonna get shot at patching potholes.
Don't want no difference, you wanna be out there patching potholes.
Then the best is violent.
You sitting down there at the prison.
Oh, yeah, I thought, I thought it was worse work you ever done. You went out there swinging gravel for six terms, would you?
Yes, sir, really, I done a bunch of.
Can we pull back?
We got our trailman at fourteen bucks an hour, right? That's correct.
What I'd like to do, I ain't got to say a word, because of Eugene, but I'd like to say that we, I'd like to post the job. And that'd give us a little time to sit down with him and tell him what we expect out of a chief police. We didn't even do that with Jeremy. Uh, there's more to it than we know about, but we know what we expect out of him. So we, we would've taken time to, the council to sit down with, with him and talk to him about.
I don't disagree with that.
And even get his ideas on what he feels like could even improve things, and see what we can try.
One, one thing I will say is, we, we have had a month to try to, you know. We could've, we knew this date was coming, you know, we were gonna have to make a hire. But I, I'm, I'm not opposed to posting it and, uh.
Well, I'm opposed to the contract period.
Can we, you, you made, Don made a good point. Has anybody on this council had an opportunity to talk to our assistant chief? Anybody?
Nobody.
And what need, what I, what I would propose is, is we. Letting him stay as an assistant chief pending that we talk to him for a month or whatever we need to do. Pull him in, get his ideals or whatever, because.
I would say he's acting chief.
I mean, acting, so we need to figure out, because if nobody's spoken to, how do you even know what he feels about it?
Well, if we've spoken, I know he wants the job, and we got good ideas and, but. I, I'm, whatever y'all do, if y'all take it two weeks.
Yeah, but you hadn't told me that you had spoken to him, because a minute ago, they said nobody had spoke to him, that's, that was good feedback. You know, because we need to know that, you've had a conversation and he wants the job, is what you're saying, so you're behind that.
I feel good about what Jonathan's done, I say that. But I'm not opposed to posting it for two weeks and giving y'all an opportunity to talk.
Well, it, it's just like when we came into office three, three years ago. You made recommendations that you wanted to keep Kenny, you wanted to keep Carla, and those were your recommendations. So I'm, as, as an appointed position to that position, what is your recommendations?
Well.
Because that is an appointed position by the mayor.
It is at the beginning of the term.
Correct.
It's not right now. I, I can't make the hire right now. Just gonna be the council, always got to read the.
But you can give your opinion.
Well, I've laid out three options.
Cause you're the one having to work with more and direct and all the day-to-day business.
Well, I mean, I think I've said, I've been pleased with what Jonathan has done during this time.
He was, did you say he was?
Can I, can I just say this, please?
Uh, I know, I know most of y'all may not know much of my background, but I went to trooper school back in the nineties, is where I started. I was supervisor, fourth in command when I left Mississippi to transfer here. My wife's parents were from here, which moved to Hamilton. Uh, they had a lot of family up here. And since January, when Jeremy took over as chief, I've been doing the scheduling. And basically, a lot of the other stuff since then, since that time. Now, where I used to work, of course, it's a lot bigger city. Than what, what I'm used to here, is a lot smaller. So, I mean, we had thirty officers. At any given time, we had six to eight officers on the shield. And like I said, I was fourth in command there when I left. But like I said, I've been doing the scheduling, all the other stuff from, since January until now. Um, I know I can't have a second job, I already knew that, and from, I, from my understanding, I can't have that even as an assistant chief. Now, I don't know if I'm correct about that, but I don't think I can. Well, even as, well, I understand that, but even as an officer, we're still on call twenty-four hours a day. I mean, technically.
Where was your previous, you tell me about Mississippi, where was that at?
Knoxville, Mississippi.
Knoxville. And to elaborate on what he was saying about scheduling, I had talked to Jeremy about it, and he said that Jonathan had been doing all of it since he took office, and had done a good job. Good job at it. And I spoke to Jeremy about it, yeah.
Just, just to let you know a little bit of what I've been doing, what I have, you know, have done, um.
I can verify that, because I have talked to him. He said you're gonna get a good job, and he's always willing to do whatever was asked of you, it didn't matter if it splits you off, now he's coming in, working back to that job or whatever.
Well, that's one thing.
He said nothing but good about you, I'll tell you that. The whole time, he's worked up here, the whole ten years.
He, he knows, when, yeah, we did, I mean, he knows if anybody couldn't come in, I was like, he knew that, well, Kenny did too.
Being a thorough individual, Jonathan's probably as thorough as anybody, I mean, on his reports, um, whatever it is. So. Do I think he's deserved the opportunity to be promoted? I do. But if y'all want to post it and have time to talk to Jonathan, I'm, it's up to y'all.
Well, I think, like Kevin said, just by posting it, or maybe you, it don't mean that he's not gonna get the job or anything, it just gives us an opportunity in case something happened where. We, you know, if he didn't want the job, or if God did something happen to Jonathan, we would have somebody maybe, that we could go and try to call to get, you know. And we might even find a policeman or two out of that interview that could be, you know, that might wanna come to Hackleburg or something. You know, just offering a job to a policeman, a lot of times they don't show up, just for a policeman, but for a chief, they, you know, they might come in and we could pick through and maybe get some. You know, somebody for the.
How long you gotta run it? For two weeks?
I mean, that's.
I say the way both is born, and by the next meeting, I mean, we oughta have a general idea. Anybody's interest, that'll give us time to talk to him, talk to each other about it, and. If he's willing to continue what he's doing till that time, I mean, I'd be strictly up to him, you know.
The work for you, Jonathan, that's right, I mean.
I don't disagree, because, um, y'all have gave excellent feedback on his performance. And based on the feedback that I've heard from the one that was over the program and you. I just don't see why, I, I wanna promote him. I wanna make a motion to promote him, is what I wanna do, because with the exception, I, I do like your ninety day probationary period. And that gives him an out, that if he doesn't like it. And then at that ninety day time, we get feedback from him. And if he doesn't like the position or something, or we've seen something that is not acceptable to our standards. Not our standards, but the town of Hackleburg standards, then we can post at that time.
So you, you're making a motion?
Yes, sir.
To promote Jonathan as chief?
For all the ninety day probationary.
And if we do this, we still need to sit down with him and talk to him.
Yeah, I think everybody.
That way you're getting feedback, hey, he might, he's got some great ideals here, or no, you can't do this, or, you know, this is working out, or, you know, there's other things that could happen too. Because what I've been told, he, he doesn't have anything in his letter, he's not had any kind of performance issues, he stepped up above and beyond. So that's an excellent record.
And I had the idea to pu, to post that job plus another officer, but if we do this, just post, we need to post for all.
Yes, exactly, exactly. Because we've still gotta look at, in the count, that we've got two.
Yeah.
Two, um, what's the word I'm looking for that's not seasoned? Police officers behind him, and who's gonna be the assistant? You know, cause we've got, we've gotta look at that, and you too, here it is, we're promoting. And it could be that we advertise for an assistant chief with the exception of five years' experience or something like that. And I don't remember what his salary was, it was like a dollar more than what the other ones made, and then use that as leverage maybe.
Or some, I don't remember, some more, anyway, maybe fifty cents, but.
Yeah.
Fifty cents?
Yeah.
But, uh. Yeah, we absolutely have to post for it.
Right.
Tabby, so what's your motion?
It was to.
Take them one at a time.
The first one was to, Carla, you got to rotate what I said.
Tabby made motion to promote Jonathan to chief with ninety day probation, probationary period.
Alright, I need, uh, to take a vote on that, Tabby made a motion, can I get a second?
Yeah.
Eugene, second, all in favor?
And the second one Don made was we need to hire.
Hold on, just a minute, so Jonathan will be promoted to chief starting tomorrow. And I, I would encourage everybody to come by and get out of the hill, make sure y'all. Schedule, I mean, he'll come anytime.
Tabby, you're happy to do it anytime?
Yeah, and we'll just sit down and whatever we say. And you understand you'll be on a ninety day probation period, and at that time. If both parties are happy, then it's good to go.
Besides Jonathan, who is our other full-time policeman? Adam?
Adam and Steve.
And Steve.
So, like we was talking about experience-wise, we, Adam, we know.
Adam's a rookie.
Right. The other guy, I really don't know exactly how long.
Steve's got a lot of police service, but he's only been at Hackleburg now for one year.
Yeah.
But we, behind Jonathan, but we don't have a lot of.
We don't have, we do not have an assistant chief at this time.
Right.
That's what we need to post of, that's.
He's gonna have to have surgery.
Yeah, so we're gonna have, yeah, cause he, we're gonna have to post for an assistant chief out of the yard next time.
Alright. So you got Tabby's motion, and then Don, your motion.
Motion to post for assistant chief.
Alright, can I get a second on that?
Second.
All in favor? Everybody? Alright.
Congratulations, Jonathan.
Congratulations.
Appreciate it. Okay, item number three.
In the, in the, in, go back a minute, we're still, you said Steve's gonna have to have surgery. And we still are backfilling the, the other individuals that we can get, correct, like Kenny and Shane and some of these others to come in and help, right? We're still, do we have any issues with?
Yeah.
With the part-time, a lot, yeah.
Jordan Carter has worked the last couple weeks, a day or two.
We do, but they're, they're hard.
It's getting Christmas time, the people will take off too.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's your biggest time.
And then the part-time, uh, has full-time jobs at other departments, so they're, they're been not always available.
Everybody's getting in their end-of-the-year vacations and all that, so they've been pretty, pretty. Everybody's getting in their end-of-the-year vacations and all that, so they've been pretty, pretty much in demand on their own job.
So Jonathan, well, do you find that being a current problem? I know, I think, a couple, Kenny talked about that a lot, about trying to find people to fill in, and I really didn't know how difficult it was to actually hire, is that something you're seeing?
Well, it, it is difficult because of part-time that we have, we have about ten to twelve or so part-time on the list, but there's only two or three that actually can come in sometimes out of those twelve, uh, that are reliable, when they can work. Um, like I say, they all have full-time jobs with other departments, and I know a couple like Scotty Blue, he has a full-time job at Red Bay, also works at Tipton's, and he can work here every other Monday. Uh, that's how some of them work, uh, so we're limited to that.
All right, anybody else? Okay. All right, moving on, item number three, uh, I think the last time we met, uh, let everybody know that we were approved for eighty-five thousand. We applied for, uh, three hundred, right at three hundred and fifty thousand, and through CDBG's small city grant. As y'all know, getting grant money to resurface roads is nearly impossible, so I feel fortunate that we were funded on the eighty-five. And, uh, we're also gonna be funded thirty thousand from District Three. And that, that money is designated to Union Hill Cemetery Road, so that, that'll take care of that road. Um, I've been dealing with Aldite since two thousand eighteen. Uh, I finally got a confirmation from Aldite State Highway Director John Cooper and Spike Brown from the West Central Division. And they have, they're, they're absolutely gonna fund the two hundred and fifty thousand.
Do you think that's true?
Yeah, they've already sent it to Montgomery, and the gentleman handling that has called me and doing the paperwork on it, so. That money, you know, I guess until you get the check in your hand, you're never, you know, a hundred, a hundred percent, but from everything I've been told and shown, we, we've got that money.
And that's for the roads?
Yes.
Okay, so the first one was eighty-five thousand, and then you said thirty thousand was going out of that eighty-five to go to the Union Hill?
No, Del Ho and District Three is adding thirty thousand to do their part of that.
Okay, that continues that process, so it's separate, that's not on our money, that's theirs.
Well, I don't know, I, I guess they'll probably handle it.
Yeah, they'll handle that, they will not come in our budget.
Yeah.
So then you said two hundred and fifty thousand is another one, but we don't have it, it's signed yet.
Yeah, we, it's, it's all we guaranteed, and we can't do anything to the spring on paving anyway.
Yeah.
But, uh, between that two fifty and our seventy-two match, we should be able to get a lot of the roads that are in the worst condition and need the most work done.
Do we have to match the eighty-five, anything on the eighty-five thousand?
No.
So it's straight up?
Our seventy-two, they, they consider that a match for whatever.
Our what then?
The seventy, we're, we're matching seventy-two overall, we.
Yeah, but that's from the two hundred and fifty thousand.
But we don't have to match anything for the two fifty.
No, we getting it, well, it's gonna be Tabby's four hundred and seven thousand.
Yes, I understand that, but.
They just want you to have skin in the game.
Correct, but we've got eighty-five thousand.
Right.
That we've already been agreed upon, I'm just asking, with this eighty-five thousand, this fixing to come to Hackaway, it's already been approved, do we have matching on this?
No.
Because this is a separate one than the two fifty.
Right.
Now, the two fifty that we're getting, it's a matching fund, is that a eighty-twenty?
That's a hundred percent, they're giving us two fifty. We're just saying, we, if we would've got the three fifty that we applied for.
I don't care about what else, I'm saying what are we getting?
I'm not telling you, though, that does matter. If we would've got the three fifty we applied for, they would've wanted to see a good match with that money.
Yeah, I understand that.
So we obligated seventy-two thousand. I think we need to keep that seventy-two thousand obligated to this money.
Yeah, I understand that, that's not what you said.
No, we're not required to match.
Well, the only thing I asked was, are we having matching fund?
Yes.
So currently, what we've got is eighty-five thousand and the two fifty that we're getting from the state of Alhambra. Which would be a total of three hundred and ten thousand dollars.
Plus the thirty from the county.
Yeah, that's separate though, because that's sort of, so.
It is, but they had worked yesterday.
If we pay that one mile road, that's about how long that is, they're gonna pay thirty, that's gonna leave us with about forty that we gotta come up, I was calculating in my mind.
Yeah, it's four hundred and seven thousand, not counting the thirty thousand he give us, that we'll get, counting the seventy-two thousand.
Union Hill Cemetery Road.
We wouldn't have spent the seventy thousand yet, though.
Yeah, yeah, but we will on that, because we got some bad roads.
Union Hill Cemetery Road will.
Have you got the, you got it here?
What those fees is ninety, well, we ain't got a bid, but engineer estimate is ninety-six thousand, seven hundred and nineteen dollars.
Well, which road?
Union Hill Cemetery Road.
Okay, that's not in here, is it?
Eighty-five thirty, I've got one right here.
That's one you don't.
Eighty-five thirty, that's a hundred and fifty, so there'll be money left, that's all it costs.
Well, there, there should be, because if you, that is, that is the worst road in Hackaway, I agree.
Put that back in the.
Eagle Road and Hill Road.
Well, if you look at what your infrastructure of your town, you're supposed to work in and move outward, and you get your infrastructure roads fixed, 'cause there's three that did not get repaired after the tornado, that we need to definitely focus on, and you know where those three are at. And then also work on that, so I'm just saying, not let those slip through the cracks, and they were in the direct line.
They were, they actually more than three, but.
But I wasn't responsible for that.
No, no, none of us was, but we just need to make sure we get them fixed, because that is next to the school, which is a large population of traffic. And then you've also got the two by the school, and then you've got one right here at your water department that never got done, that's pretty bad, and then that is the worst. That's just, and they're not that wrong.
But them two that I mentioned, you'd have to work on them every day.
Yeah.
One twenty-one.
And one twenty-one is bad too.
Hill Road, Eagle Road, tho- these are roads that have been approved by the state. Um, Second Street East to West. But now we do have a little bit of flexibility where we can, if we have a road that is in the city and, you know, might be holding up development or whatever.
Or torrent to, to get water lines and things like that.
Yeah, we, we do have a little bit of flexibility on the two fifty because it come out of the discretionary fund.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So, we, we can.
Yeah.
How far do you feel like that'll go? How far do you think that four hundred thousand will go?
You're looking at about a hundred thousand a mile.
It was like seventy-five thousand, I think, before we calculated last year. Or you were.
Give or take, yeah.
I started taking this.
Depending on how the road.
Took us two years to get this grant.
Yeah. Guess the gas tax funds that they would come to, small towns will.
We should, we should get about twenty-five thousand a year off that.
But that's, that's good, if you're getting four hundred, I mean, getting out of there.
Oh, absolutely, it's crazy.
Well, we're not getting four hundred, we're getting, we're putting our money in with it.
All together, though, we'll have four hundred.
You're gonna have, but we're out of it.
Yeah, but I'm saying, if we can get some help with it, gas tax money, we could do all our roads and.
With eighty-five and two fifties, what you getting?
So, anyway, that kinda covers three and four there, uh, we did get the eighty-five thousand dollar grant through a deck of CDBGs. And on number four, on discussed rubber paving, we, we haven't gotten in yet, but we have been telling everything to go on the Aldite one, two hundred and fifty thousand.
Keep it put down and keep trying to get, work for more and more and more, what we can get, we can get, we use them, that's what you said, like, you gotta stay steady.
Yeah.
After it, I mean, you don't.
All right, um, item number five, discuss gas board. Me, I don't, anyway, Northwest, uh, Northwest Dollar Gas District has purchased Lamar Gas. Um, they feel like, we feel like that, uh, it's a really good acquisition. We automatically are gonna pick up fourteen hundred customers, and there's a lot of potential down there to expand. And it ain't very often you can pick out that many customers in one, one league like that. And just crunching the numbers, they, they feel like can have that paid for five to seven years, so that's a pretty good payback kind of thing. So, just to bring y'all up to date on.
With that capital, you know, that capital investment right there, and you said earlier it was Vernon Seligent who?
No, it wasn't Seligent, they're in already, it's Vernon, Milton Kennedy.
Kennedy, okay, yeah. Um, does that affect any of our any split in the future?
No, they're, they will not have a board member.
Okay, good.
We, we just bought them out, we've acquired them.
Okay, so they took them on approach, okay, good.
Yeah, nobody, no other board members that come to the table. All right, uh, item number six, discuss the repayment of bank fees to Peoples Trust Bank. Y'all seen the, uh, I, I can't remember the exact amount of the invoice, but it was ninety, it was nearly ten thousand. Um, I spoke with their attorney, I think Tony has probably spoke with him too, and tried to get that lowered. He claims it is lowered and it is low as a good, they had already took some money off of it. Um, the only thing I will say about it is Peoples Trust, they, they, I feel like they done everything they could do to help us when we were going down that road. And, um, had we continued down that road, they would've done the deal, I'm pretty confident in that, but or something that saved us a little more money came along, but, um, you know, I, I guess we helped incur some of them fees by dealing with them. And I think what we offered was five thousand dollars, and the, the attorney wouldn't take it, so.
Who leaves our attorney?
Justin Little is, is Navy's out of Tuscaloosa, but I think what had happened, I think the bank had obligated itself to pay him. What we're really doing is indemnifying the bank, and, uh, you know, contractually, we've got no obligation whatsoever to pay that debt. However, I suggest you pay it.
Well, we wanna stay a good standing with him, and they, they were really good to us in a time of what could've been a dire need.
I knew we didn't.
Well, it was a dire need, and, uh, you know, they, they done everything they could do.
There, there's a lot of reasons that I.
What service did they, did he provide that we're having to pay nine thousand dollars for?
Well, he did provide some service, I mean, he met with me one day, but that's neither here nor there. Uh, there's a lot of reasons I'd make that recommendation. Again, you do not have a contractual obligation, it's purely good pay, goodwill, but there, there are several reasons, not the least of which, I don't wanna mention here, but I think you all know what it is, and I, we need to pay that debt.
Can we get an itemized bill of what we're paying?
Uh, we could, but I really don't suggest we do.
That don't sound right, though, when you're saying.
But the bank, I mean, even if we made to pay half of it, the bank wasn't willing to pay half, or?
Well, the, the problem, we may need to begin, that's the problem, I, I, I don't believe in someone that.
We sure don't need that lawyer again.
But.
No, I mean, I, I don't care about that lawyer, I'm talking about the man.
But we're paying a fee that we don't know, but we're, you're saying we need to pay a fee, but we don't have a history of why we're paying it, I'm not gonna agree to that.
We, we do have a itemized bill.
Did they appraise it?
Do what?
And they, was there a praiser?
No, they didn't praise it, they handled the legal fees for the bank.
Right. That was just the legal fee.
And we, I'm like Tony, I feel like we should pay it, we're not. We're not obligated to pay it, but, um.
We're not.
They were not obligated to help us either, and they were doing everything they could to help us when the deal got changed around.
So they, they provided a service for us for about two weeks.
No.
While we were filing this deal. Because we came in here and met, we hadn't even had, we hadn't even hired him yet, or whatever happened. And then, then it was within a month it changed and went back to the other deal. So nine thousand dollar deal for a service that we really don't know what it is for less than a month.
I mean, we, we have a, I don't have it here, but, I mean, we've got an itemized breakdown.
You, you can look at it this way, we're, we're indemnifying the bank. I don't know what the bank had between Justin Little, the, the service he gave me wasn't worth much, but he was, I, he was, he was the lawyer for the bank, and basically, we're indemnifying the bank for their legal fees, that's what we're doing, and that's.
Normally, those would've been tied into the, uh, to the loan.
They would've been part of the loan.
Spread out with the payment, but the loan never happened.
That was within that additional money that we were having to get. You remember, wasn't it twenty-five thousand that we were having to get to cover?
Right.
That would've been within that, so we would've been paying it.
Right.
Fortunately, I think it worked out for the good, the way we went, but that wasn't an option at the time.
Like I said, you know, I, I don't, I don't like it, I don't feel good about it, but they, they tried to help us when they didn't have to.
Well, I, I know what it is.
They had done whatever they had to do to make the deal work.
If they want to negotiate a settlement, I'm not gonna vote for it. I'm, I may, I, I think, I do all my business with that bank, and I ain't gonna do nothing to hurt him, I'm not gonna vote again, I'm just not even gonna vote.
What, uh, what, what would y'all feel comfortable doing if you don't wanna do the whole, pay the whole amount?
I'd be willing to negotiate the thing, but, but for them to tell us they won't do nothing, that leaves me completely out.
What do we, what do we tell you to take the same the first time, five thousand?
Do what?
What do we tell you to take to the table, five thousand?
Five thousand, he wouldn't take that.
Right, but then why, how much did it weigh, like ninety-four hundred, the bank wouldn't pay the other forty-four, or, I mean, didn't appear they would. We agreed to pay five thousand of it, and I thought that, if he didn't talk to you in two hours, or five thousand divided by two, that's about twelve, fourteen hundred dollars in there, that's pretty good money.
Pretty good. Well, he, he did. Probably charge three hundred dollars an hour, which would be the good one.
Three or four hundred.
But.
The, the problem, he did do some work for the bank, and I know he wrote a, a great big treatise to them, I, I read that, uh, on some things we had to do here to get the loan. I'm like hell, I don't like, I don't like it, but I wouldn't, there's certain things I don't cut off, 'cause I've learned better, 'cause I've cut a lot of them off, and made a lot of enemies, and, and we may need them.
Well, in the very beginning, I, I told them we, we would be good on what our obligations are, so. Now, it was just to discuss the damn here.
If, if we told them we'd take care of it, I think they'd take care of it.
I mean, I don't think anybody's thrilled to do it, but, you know, we're looking long term. Um, are we gonna ever be looking at Peoples Trust to help us again? You know, I'm not saying this would cause them not to, but they wouldn't be as, uh, they wouldn't be as happy to step out on a limb like they were going to here.
I was fixing to say, I just wanted to go get my two dollars out.
Apparently they need it.
Well, I, I still, I still cannot vote for it, 'cause we've not seen it. We're going off of, we owe nine thousand dollars, but we don't know what's in that service.
Well, it's like Tony said.
I don't understand that, why it's so high.
Just need an invoice or something.
We do.
You got it, I mean, we gotta have that for record.
We, we do, and we will, but.
Kind of like.
So does that invoice just say you owe me nine thousand dollars?
We, we have an invoice on it, but it's like Tony said, we're, we're doing the right thing by paying the fees that we really.
What's on that invoice that we're not talking about?
Mayor Lawley, I don't have a problem with that.
What, what's on it?
Well, it wouldn't be an invoice to us, it'd be to the bank.
Yeah.
It would be, it wouldn't be an invoice to us, it'd be a, to the bank.
If the bank wants us to pay it, just get them to revert that to us.
So the bank, we gotta have that for records.
Well, that'd be fine.
We will.
I think we can get that.
Yeah, we can, I know we can.
So many of them.
But I am sure it was indemnifying pretty much the bank.
It's the bottom line, it's what we're doing, I mean.
You know, I'm like Councilwoman Lawley, we was in the record of it, I don't, I don't probably think it's what we owe them, we, we just go up, throw in nine thousand dollars, if somebody or they up here come in with nine thousand dollars or something.
We ain't throwing nine thousand to anybody, we, we were the reason Peoples Trust.
Yeah, but early on, we needed it, that wasn't gonna happen, so, but I, I don't, I mean.
Early on we did, early on.
I understand, but there's closing costs and it goes through, but, I, we never signed a contract, but we're gonna be obligated to them legal fees.
It's basically doing the right thing.
Just provide a statement, I mean, that's all it's all asking, that's what she said.
Did we not have a letter or something?
Provide a statement showing what we are.
That we had a copy of?
Yeah, I'll, I'll, I can, I'll give an invoice for Justin.
And this table to the next bank to bring out?
Well, it, it probably won't be that long, 'cause I'm getting caught every day, they don't like having it on their books, and they wanna close us out by the end of the year.
Yeah, they gonna wanna close their books this year, and so.
They can accrue it, that's financial records, have accrual rights until it's on the books, 'cause we have to accrue stuff too.
I can get an invoice, but, I mean, and, and I will, it ain't no problem, but, we just, we need to know if we wanna pay it. If we're stacking five thousand.
I'm not voting to pay it, not, not voting to pay that. Because it's like, if you go buy anything, you got closing costs unless you finish the deal out, you're not obligated to that.
I've got a, I've got the invoice, I don't have it on the, but I can get it. So we, we know we're, we're doing this for the bank, um.
Yeah, I could care less about paying that damn lawyer, but.
Right.
I'll make a motion to pay whatever you can provide on a sheet of paper saying we owe, that'll be my motion, whether it be five thousand, nineteen thousand, four hundred fifty thousand. If it's in writing on paper, say that's what we owe, that, that'll be my motion. If you needing it done, well, they can close out, but it's gonna have to be a legal binding, something that can go in our financial records. If you, if you need it, that, that'd be my motion, they might nobody write with it, if they want it done by the end of the year, that's all, that's all I could do.
How about this?
That's all I can do.
I'll get a copy and email or send it to everybody, so you have it. Carlos got the main copy. And pending that y'all know we have the invoice for record, that we make a motion to go ahead and pay this and be done with it.
It's gotta, it.
It's got to come from him.
It's gotta come from the bank.
It's gotta be on official letter, I guess.
That's right.
It is.
Can't leave something waiting to go up.
Yeah, away from the attorney.
Which means ninety-four hundred dollars, they ain't gonna chew one penny, they want us to pay their bill completely.
And I mean, any, when you, when you go out to borrow money, don't, it's like if it was individual, like three or four different people's gonna give you an offer, and you talk to them, then you take them, but I, I mean.
This was a unique.
Then I understand what he's saying too, I'm, I'm a hundred and ten percent, I know who's behind that, Mike, I know right where he's coming from.
Well, I don't think that's got anything to do with it, the thing to me is it was a unique deal that most banks would not look at.
They wouldn't.
Um, if they did, they would want you to get an SBA loan, fifty percent, put down twenty to go with it, 'cause I talked to a couple.
We didn't get no money from them.
I know, but we, we caused them to incur the, those fees.
Well, all we need is, like I said, all, all they need is state.
I'll, I'll have it, if, uh, if we can have a white session before the end of the year, or if y'all give me permission to get it and sell it to everybody, and then say, yeah, we, we have the record, we have the documentation, let's pay it. I mean, that'll work.
I mean, basically, when we go up, tell them, put it on there, you know, they can put, but, uh, if we've got to pay it, if it's on record, official letter from the bank, if the bank owes it, they send us saying, here's what we was billed, this is what we want y'all to pay. I'm good with that, I make the motion to do that, if it comes from a bank, they say this is what the bank incurred, the deal fell through, like, if y'all to pay this amount, that, that's what I'm good with paying. As long as it's on a piece of paper that can go on our financial statement, now, that's, that's just me.
Well, I mean, I agree with that, and that, that can happen, I don't like it any more than y'all do, but.
I mean, I don't like it, but it's like Attorney Lynn said, we don't need to cut her nose off by her face, but, you know, I don't know. But again, I know my situation really.
That I said that was this, I noticed some things about another place that's put some banks in an awful bad position. Banks aren't gonna mess with a small town anymore.
Oh, yeah, and especially when you got more capital, I mean, I appreciate them.
Right.
Taking a chance, so, I'm not saying that at all, but.
Yeah, I, I didn't, I'm just thinking ahead.
Yeah.
We may, hopefully we'll never need them, but we may.
Might get an option for a business one day, and make to take a loan out, because it'll lure that business in here.
That's right.
And without them, we can't get it, you know?
That's what I'm looking at.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think anybody's fired up about paying it, or happy about it, but.
What makes me mad is I drink coffee with them now, I have to drink coffee by myself.
Yeah, they do, yeah.
Well, that's worth something, though.
So, but I will.
I, I just think in good faith, when I, I'll get the broke down invoice, and get everybody the copy, if y'all give me permission at that point, to cut them a check and put this to bed, I think we're gonna be better off in the long run. But that's my opinion.
Eugene has made a motion, so it needs to, it's in my second.
Can I get a second on Eugene's motion? And that's getting, getting a copy of the invoice, going on our records, showing it is legit price on it. And then y'all give me a right, the right to go ahead and cut that check and end it. I mean, like I said, nobody's, nobody's happy with having to pay it, but.
Well, maybe, well, they get it through up, let their attorney approve it, and then, I mean.
Was it the bank that would not accept the five thousand dollars, or was it the lawyer?
The lawyer.
So why are we not dealing with the bank and telling them that?
I've dealt with the bank also.
Yeah, but.
And they said they.
Like it's their place, because they were trying to.
The bank didn't want to pay any corporate.
So that's weird that we're having to negotiate with the lawyer when he, they actually hired him. I mean, we shouldn't have to be dealing with that.
Well, we, we actually left from negotiating with the lawyer to negotiating with the bank. And they don't feel like they should have to pay anything because.
So the bank's not fighting, thinking that he's overpaying them, overcharging, I mean.
I'm sure that's his rates with the bank. They, bank, that's, they're expensive. They no doubt about it, I don't think he inflated the bill, that's just the rate.
I'll stick to Eugene's.
Got a motion and a second, all on paper. Pass out. Any opposeds?
I'm not opposed, but I don't wanna stand. I'm not gonna vote for it, and I ain't gonna do nothing to hurt the thing, but I ain't gonna vote.
If we don't pay them, they're gonna look at it like we're hurting them, right?
Well, we, we, they hurting us, we're getting nine thousand dollars for nothing.
Well, they're not actually giving it.
I can't do it.
Ten.
You just gotta, just as long as you got it, I'll vote.
All right, so.
And let's not make another bad deal like this. I just consider that terrible.
Looking for bad deals, I mean, we were trying to do the best deal we could, make sure we didn't lose the store. But anyway, do you, you got that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, item number seven, discuss occupational tax reverse account. We're, we're gonna leave the school tax in there for the time, every what time we consider it to be sufficient. But, in my opinion, taking that ten thousand out of the general fund now, um, I don't see that we need to, but it's up here.
If we got money going in there for a reserve in case something happens, I'm happy with it, other than, other than that. Keep it in the general fund, leave it in the general fund, but we need money going into that to, to help in case that grocery store word falls up.
Or if we get an option that something else come in.
That's right, and we could use it for that.
If you had another business come in, need some help or something like that.
And, and that's what that.
It's about growth, I mean, if it, think about it then, if you got it in a separate account and need it, just like having a savings account, you can use it, but if you ain't got it, need it, you can't use it.
That's why, yeah.
So, I mean, that, that ain't no, no way I felt about it, I mean, it don't matter.
You mentioned earlier that we had to have seventy-two thousand dollars of discretionary funds that you were gonna pay towards roads. Okay, right now on the gas and street, that's a hundred and eight, you don't wanna deplete that. So it'd be wise to utilize that, so the eighteen thousand dollars, also can it be put in the gas tax fund or the street that's not added to any one of these funds yet, is that legal?
With the eighteen thousand, and we're, we're not through spending money yet, but the eighteen thousand going back into the general fund, if we're paying Peoples Trust, I mean, it don't really matter where we spend it, it.
Well, I was thinking ahead that the seventy-two thousand dollars that we're gonna have to take out of this, that's, we didn't budget for, because we've gotta add that in here too, I know the budget's on further down, that we're planning ahead, and we need to say that we're gonna utilize that. Now we're taking nine thousand dollars that we didn't budget for, so, that eighteen thousand dollars that's not showing on our financial report, that would pay for the nine thousand dollars. That would leave us four, forty-four, fifty-three, because you didn't, you said it wasn't in there. And then we're gonna have seventy-three thousand dollars that we need for y'all to do the street department, so that we know we're gonna spend it.
Well, the rea- the reason I'll say use part of the eighteen thousand, because that.
That's what's there.
It's tied in with the grocery store.
That's what's there, yeah. One of them drive, yeah, okay.
So, Carla, when we move the eighteen, I just, just noted that, too, that it come out of that eighteen.
Yeah, that's what I can do, and then the ten thousand, are you gonna leave it?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Okay. Uh, item number eight, set date for neighbor day, two thousand twenty.
That's nineteen.
Yeah, but it's just in twenty.
Well, I'm still working in nineteen.
Normally, we try to do the last weekend in April, to stay away from the first weekend in May. Is that right?
Yeah, 'cause you didn't wanna do it on the same weekend as the alumni and all that stuff.
I, I didn't have a problem if some people don't, because it's too much for them, but I'm okay if y'all wanna do it. What y'all thinking?
To have the neighbor day where alumni, it would overlap?
Either the first weekend in May or the last weekend in April.
Does anybody ever check to see maybe the alumni people would wanna come today, or maybe?
We done it for sure, we elected it, like, what can't we vote, do it like that, what did y'all think? I mean, there is, I don't know, it's a, ten for ten, you got a lot of people comes out, a lot of people comes in, and there is a lot going on.
There's a lot of vendors that start going places in May.
I just say, leave it late.
We told, we also, we also talked about, is it possible that we could combine our July and that, like you're talking about?
He's gonna do it fourth of July, and I'm doing it over there.
Yeah, because two of them is really hard to do.
That's right.
We did discuss that then.
Yeah.
We saved it all for July.
I, I've argued all night, but I'm gonna, I wasn't gonna say nothing about this, I'm, whatever y'all gonna do, but, but to put them together and have it the fourth of July might be the answer. Because we have a crowd the fourth of July.
One more moment, try that one again.
We can move everything up here, the music and all.
Yeah.
Come in and do it.
Because there's not room down there for vendors.
And you still do your fireworks that night?
You got it right there.
Do the vending all day long, I'm gonna do it one day? And then get over with at midnight?
You could do it Friday night and Saturday, you could, if you wanted to.
One night only.
I know, I know, that's what I'm feeling, but we could negotiate. We, we.
Late year, this is late year, this is late year.
We could still do, uh, like, the vendors on Friday night, which is the third.
Yeah, if they would've set up, just let people come in shop.
Yeah, I think if it's a bottom, then we need to make it a two-day.
See, we could do it all day on Friday, if you only do, I guess, so. Don't matter to me.
I think it's tough doing two, don't you?
It is, but it works by them.
It is.
It's really hard on you, boy, 'cause you expect them to work, and then too, everybody get together.
In May, it's gotten so big for all the towns, they, they start with that first weekend and.
Can you, before we set this date, can you fill out, I'm talking about fill out for the vendors to see if they're available?
Yeah.
'Cause it's gonna be bad if we set a date.
Yeah.
And then we can't, so, and then table it till our next January meeting, and then you provide that to them.
We have people calling, and, you know, about every day, have somebody wanting to know.
Yeah.
Which I will say, there's gonna be some disappointed people if we can't, so neighbor day too.
Well, we're not, can we call it neighbor day, but it's in July.
This ain't gonna be.
Yeah, and it, we're not mad, that they're like, some mad, they go to other ones.
There's a lot of people, they were happy we added the July event, they liked both of them, I mean, they just liked opportunity to get together.
Post it on Facebook and get feedback for two weeks, see how many feedback you get there.
You do that.
There'll be a bunch of it.
That way you got the opinion of the public.
Stay off of Facebook.
Yeah. We have to look at, we have to look at what's, what benefits the town, how much turnout do we have? Because it is costly, it does cost the town money.
Turnout, I think, be in both of them, yeah.
No, it's spend, we spend more money for the fourth of July because of the fireworks.
Yep, normally.
And that was what, about five thousand dollars?
We've raised the money, and sometimes can get all grand to help, so.
And then we're having to raise it twice, so it's important how important we're gonna work.
Y'all need y'all's advice. Y'all can't make me and Abby mad on this, can you?
I just, I just think the people enjoying neighbor day and, and the fourth of July event.
And their fireworks just become really big.
I think we have a bigger turnout than at the fourth of July celebration than we do neighbor day. And. I think we need to come.
And even I can take what money spent on neighbor day, get a better entertainment, you know, fill a little money.
Softball and all of the teams playing.
I'll make a motion, well, do we have to have a motion to combine?
Yeah.
We just gotta discuss it and figure out what we wanna do.
Okay.
And let people know ahead of time where they'll understand that they're planning to come.
So based on your feedback from the vendors in January, then we can make, set the date in conflict.
I know they're already calling about that.
Yeah, they are.
Well, I'll be good if you say, well, where you gonna be fourth of July, just to be there again.
And if we can't get.
Then they can set it down. If it don't work out, they can go back to it.
Eugene, you said you expect the boys to work that day. That's a probably holiday that we're supposed to have off to spend with our family.
Yeah.
Fourth of July.
Well, normally, you know. I'm not talking about that, just in general, normally neighbor day.
Yeah, right. Fourth of July is a long day for me. And the neighbor day too, ain't it?
Be better if we had homemade ice cream, though.
That ice cream guy came home a long time since he had it.
Well, do y'all wanna table it, you can check on it, or?
Yes.
Yeah, I'll table it. We heard checks on the vendors, hey, they need to make the decision.
Carla. Just check on it and see.
She's been trying to get him every year, though.
Did you try to get that vendor that had the ice cream at, that watermelon festival? That has a John Deere tractor out there smiling, that turns it?
Yeah.
Oh.
It's good. We've had it before, but it's, you can hardly get him, or the guy from Fulton, Mississippi, he's good too.
Okay, alright, Carla, just look into that. You and Mandy and Sue, y'all.
Did that one make the decision, you know, the vendor flip?
Alright, item number nine, um. Now, there's been some talk about the fire department making their own payment on the building, and I think Tony spoke with.
I spoke, I, I also checked with league on it, can't do it. The only way we can do it is if we sell them the property. But if we sell them the property, we have to sell it at fair market value. And there has to be a written contract. We'd have to get an appraisal and sell it at fair market value.
That's confusing. How can you sell the bill, who are you selling it to?
We're selling it to the fire department.
But we.
Fire department's a non-municipal entity.
Correct, correct, but we control the fire department, so we can come back to the town. Yeah.
If they buy the building, it won't.
If they buy the building, it, it won't come back to the town. Now. There's a real problem there, because I know where you're going. You can, you can buy, you can have equipment. We can give certain equipment to the volunteer fire department. Here's the catch twenty-two, though. If they get rid of the equipment, guess who they gonna give it back to? Because, so the town always maintains ownership. And that's where the catch in that, the flaw in that transaction is. Cause if we assign the building to them, we can't do that. We have to get fair market value. From a non-municipal entity to buy the bill.
Which is gonna be.
Right.
A pretty substantial amount with that new building and.
Oh, yeah.
So, Tony, basically, that ruling would be then, for that money that comes into the fire department, to make sure it don't get used back through. Except for the fire department.
That's right. That's what, that's basically what it is, and get, I understand town deuards already had tried, and they couldn't do it. They wanna do something very similar and, and they wouldn't allow it.
It don't make sense.
That rule, that rule.
Don't even make sense. That is the fire department building. And we passed a tax for them to get all kinds of money, and they can't use it for their building.
Can you charge them rent?
You could do that. Now, I would think you could charge them rent, but now. You might do that. I hadn't, I hadn't crossed that bridge, but I did cross the bridge of how to get it to them. And then pay for it. And the only way to do it was to, to sell them the building at fair market value.
Right.
Which was. That was probably set up for the volunteer fire departments that are not incorporated in a town anywhere where they.
Those are communities.
That's right.
Where there, there is not a town overseas.
Right.
That may be something you wanna talk to Steve off on, you know, after.
And I will certainly check further into it, but, but I've had three entities now tell me you can't do it. And it, and it certainly appears that way. There's, there's a section in the code that makes me believe that too.
What we was told is the only way that we could use it for a building is if we built a. That's what we've got. Or if you bought one. But for being that that's pre-existing.
Can't just start making payments on, say, purchase or build one.
Any, anything we would do with them in that area, I'd certainly want a, a written contract, and I'd want it approved by somebody.
Yeah.
I, I wouldn't wanna just go out there and start charging them rent, I'm not sure we can do that.
Okay, well. You know, Tony found out what he could, what.
Yeah.
His request on that, so.
I, I'm all for doing, but I, I was disappointed we couldn't do it.
Yeah, they, they built some pretty strict rules.
Yeah, apparently they have.
And they used shit on the fire. But they have to go by too.
Yeah, that's right.
So. Alright, item number ten, discuss update on the street department. Chad, Sarah, now, we'll kinda let you. Talk about what's been going on in the street department. We'll try to get a different. Envoy from each department to each meeting and stake all that on what's going on.
I guess most of, he's talking about paving. We've been looking at coverage that, that's gonna need replaced. Or we might wanna replace before that road gets paved. Uh, you know, so we don't pave over and ruin a good road at that point. Uh, like he said, Union Hill, there's three on there, in my opinion, that I would replace. One of them's pieced together already. And the other two is metal and rusted pretty bad on one end or the other, so it's gonna be a problem eventually. Street signs, it's always a deal. We've put up three last week. Somehow, the other this one on the corner out here keeps getting tore down. They throw it down behind the fire department. We figured that one out yet, but.
Since we're discussing that, and I'd like to move on to go ahead and hire a full-time employee to help him tonight. Everybody's gonna agree, man, they need some help. We went from four to one. I know we got two part-timers, but.
Well, now I've talked to Chad about that, and he likes it better with two part-time than he does with four-time.
I see this.
You get with that.
Pick left and two, and I feel like we have done a great job with the two part-times we got.
Well, if you ask me, I just don't want you to run off. That's what I'm trying for. You asked me with that, I.
I'm happy with ways, ways so far. I mean.
Well, if we don't go over a part-time hours, that's what we're gonna want tomorrow.
Now, granted, I don't, you know, I don't know how y'all gonna work these covers, or we gonna do, or y'all gonna contract it, the way I look at that.
Probably have to help us some.
Well, that's the way I look at it. I feel like we should do it, 'cause that saves more money to go toward the paving. And plus, we've got the equipment, did some part-time, the way I look at it, I mean, the street department. Somebody might argue that with me.
And I think the commission would help us with the cover.
And I'm gonna say this, and put this on record, I know I brag about you a lot, after that building, but. There, there's no way we can get somebody with your knowledge and experience for what. We've got you for, and I don't want you to leave. We've gotta keep you, you know, and I appreciate what you do.
I know I've spent some money out there, but I've made a bunch of repairs.
The only, the only thing that I can see that could be a minus by having part-time help. Is if you've got some jobs that you need to get done, where two people are, you're having to wait on them. And that's not a positive. We did, I agree with what your statement was, Eugene. We had four.
Yeah.
And now we're down to one and two part-time.
And algorithm looking, doesn't work out.
I think we need to hire one and keep the part-time in there, because still the funding is in the budget.
Right, we can keep that one.
And then that way it keeps ours, and he can have a person there, because he has, he's got, leave, he's gotta take.
I'm not, I'm not totally opposed to hiring one, I just don't think what they do in the winter time.
I wouldn't in the winter.
I mean, either way, once I'm paying whenever we do it, I think we need to do that in the future. Then that way you keep your part-time under the part-time regulations, keep the hours where they're supposed to be, and then he's got some help.
They know that. I've had meetings with Hood and Ronald, and they know they cannot go over the, a lot of time to be part-time.
I still think we need posted. I agree with you.
Yeah, we do need another four.
And we're using Ronald for Doc now, so right now.
Yep. So you making a motion to post it, Eugene?
Yeah.
Qualifications are we gonna put?
If they need to.
Be the same one that Chad's qualifications was when we posted these. You already got a job descrip, or a job posting from the past, don't you?
Well, just. Pretty mechanically planned, yeah. Work experience, growth rate, no criminal history.
You gotta have operators too.
You gotta have license, don't you, drop?
Yeah.
See, yeah.
Well.
Well, they.
It's not on the agenda. I, I don't think we can hire anybody tonight.
We'll put it on paper.
Yeah, better, better not do it tonight.
Put on that, lay it on that way with the keeps there, I don't know, there.
But anyway. You know, we stopped too late. I know y'all have had to haul gravel and. Work driveways and, so. Anyway. And we'll, we'll look at that in January. Um. Had everybody get a chance to go back over the budget. I mean, we were close to being able to pass it. So unless anybody's.
Just, just research a year anyway, if we get a little behind on it, we can make it up. Have a perfect one first year.
I mean, I'm, I'm seeing a lot more money left over in the general fund. Knowing where this money's going and it being tracked, then. I don't see how it was ever kept up with just working out of the general fund.
It's almost like a self-auditorium.
Well, you're auditing yourself.
Well, you're seeing how good you can plan. There, since we're gonna allocate the seventy thousand dollars towards the street department. Which is gonna be potential. That's not in here, we'll need to add that, Carla, 'cause y'all said it was gonna allocate seventy-two thousand dollars as an expenditure. We will have an income of that, but we can't add it yet, which will drive that up. Because right now, we're planning. On our revenue being seven hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars. We had planned on spending eight hundred forty-one thousand, because we agreed we were gonna do some projects. Some of those projects that we were gonna do was the thirty thousand dollars to upgrade the wrecks and stuff like that. Pay, pay off the police car, and we did that, that was thirty-four thousand. So that's the reason we will be over. But we also need to put in here that allocation of that seventy thousand dollars, and that way we're planning for it. And it's not a bad thing of being over, you know, as long as we got a, a reason why we're over budget.
So, about eight twenty-nine, one forty.
That's right. And then, then what'll happen is, is when the three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars comes into us. That's gonna drive that number up, which we should look good at that point. And then once you do that, I'm good with it, I approve it.
Does that motion?
Yeah, she just sent that in too.
We're gonna add the street department instead of seventy-two to there.
Yeah, and it's kind of the street department under, um.
Does it need to go to maintenance?
Yes, ma'am. That's my kind of the roads.
We should put that number at eight twenty-nine, one forty, yeah.
We need to figure out a way, and we can do it next year, but to. To separate street maintenance with, uh, actual working on the streets and. What is spent on vehicles and equipment. All that.
Yeah.
That's one like.
You can have one.
Barlow was talking about having a budget within a budget, have each, you know, the department have their own budget, and then they could break that down. Supervisor over that department, which will probably be Chad, and then it would be them. Now, key food. I mean, you know, they could break it down line by line.
Next year, they, they will turn in their own budget, and then we'll.
Yeah, that, and that would cover what?
Okay, so. And making the, uh. Carla, and making the corrections for the. Money, grant money for the roads and what's gonna be coming out of.
Okay, I'm gonna add the seventy thousand to the maintenance district. So it will change it.
You, you said we did get, we've got definitely approval of the eighty-five. You can add that, but I would not add the two fifty in, let it run, because you've not got official approvals for that. And that's gonna bounce, that's gonna be pretty close.
How much year in total, we have it, but. How much year in total, but if the two fifty added, we get it.
That's correct, that's correct. But we know we're gonna spend some money, 'cause we've got two big projects that we're trying to improve.
I'll just make a new account to put that in.
Think it'd be better.
Just a road paving income or a grant income or something.
Keep that separate. Okay, so I need a motion to accept the budget for two thousand.
Motion.
All in favor? Alright, item number twelve, uh, y'all can get this in your folder. Style down the post responder's benefit program.
Is that this?
This is a, uh.
That was next.
Did Steve give you the list of the?
Yes, there's a list in there, I'm sorry. I'm still writing. There should be a list. Um, here. Yeah.
Yellow, that goes with this?
Yeah, it goes with that. The yellow, um, they have west ending your surface, and the two orange, they all resurface.
That, Steve, that's probably gonna change within the next couple of months, too, because we started to force this and stuff. And the folks that ain't helping us.
Somebody's had active, they're gonna be taken off.
Right.
Right now, we, I mean, he's got twenty-four on here, we're probably gonna end up roughly twenty. But most towns are adopting this, and, uh, it's basically a. Cancer benefit program for. Fire departments. And if you go to the pages, I don't know the number, but if you have this page right here, it's got the price on it, the little thing. On option one, which is the basic plan. Paid firefighters, we don't have any certified. You don't have any certified without?
Yeah, we counted it the other day, I thought he was supposed to have it on there, his seat.
Did he say that all of them were certified?
No, I think, but about six or seven.
The only things that he told me, he had, uh, the less than one year service and then the reserves.
Yeah, we can call him out, and you can tell him if y'all are in. David Cantrell.
He is, he's certified.
B J Carroll.
He's not.
Dylan Emerson. Jason Abel. Peyton Abel. Matthew Feder.
Or wait, yeah, Matthew is certified.
Kenny, I'm sure he is, is he? Paul.
No, he's not, he's inactive.
Stephen Hood. Tim Hood. Chad Yor. Shane Hudson.
He's not.
Jason Abel. Zach Kelly. Alan Langley. Rachel Langley. Shane Mason. Casey Raper. Major.
Major is.
Amber Sandler. Kathy.
Kathy's not.
Anthony Stiddle. Jared Stiddle. Morgan Abel, Morgan Stiddle.
Morgan Stiddle is.
James Hill.
If he is, right.
So you're saying they're certified?
We got six.
We're certified.
For what?
Being a volunteer fire department, they call it, you're volunteer one sixty, uh, if you's career, they call it firefighter one, same difference. And some of us has got other certifications, I've got a couple others, uh, but that's saying that we're actually a certified volunteer firefighter.
When you said Stephen Hood, when I went, wait a minute, he is, he's above that, he's the chief.
Yeah, but he's not, he's, I think he says he has fire business yet, the, the fire college doesn't. Wait, y'all can log into Tuscaloosa Fire College and look up every certification that every individual works got.
How can he be the chief if he's not certified?
Chief before I get here. Maybe he's grandfathered.
He's your grandfather.
I mean, I, I don't know that you have to be certified.
I don't want that to be honest, I, I don't know that our rules require, I mean, as far as, I know they don't, but I don't know if there is a law that says. I mean, it's volunteer.
But I know he does a good job.
Yeah, yeah, he does a heck of a job, I thought he had every certification that there was.
In the career?
Yes.
World absolute volunteer.
Cause he's got EMT and he's got all the other stuff.
That ain't what it says. On the front page, it's an unfunded mandate to begin with. I hope this package finds everyone in the fire department safe and well, as you know Governor. I've designed a new law in May of twenty nineteen that will be effective January the first twenty twenty. The new law mandates that all fire departments throughout the state of Alabama provide cancer and disability coverage for their firefighters. Based on certain categories in which they fall. So that's saying fire. But it is an unfunded mandate, she's mandated that this be done without funds to be, to be done with.
I see, uh, the answer to your question there is for pay, it's for career fire department. But they would certify cases, that would be certified.
We're not, they're not career paid.
She's saying it to fire department to furnish it for them without the fines to furnish it.
Maybe I'll read this on document before we vote on that.
Yeah, tell me.
We need to read this.
We'll table it to the next thing, give Tony time to look at it. I mean, I, I'm definitely interested in anybody that'll run into a furnace building and try to save my life, I'm all for that. So we'll table that, let Tony have a chance to look at it. Eugene made a second to table, or motion, can I get a second? Eugene, can I have y'all in favor? All right, uh. I need to get a copy of that to care where. Item number thirteen, when we hired on Chad. We talked about when he'd been here for at least six months, but we didn't really give an exact date over that, but. He would be due for a raise, um. I propose that we give Chad a dollar an hour raise and. Make him superintendent of the street department.
I agree, I agree totally, but who are we supervising?
And he's in charge of the work.
Okay, I mean, the only reason I'm not, is you can't supervise yourself, that's something I'm saying, he needs the people below it.
Well, he's not here by himself, I mean, maybe an hour sometime during the day.
But his job's gonna be to find what needs fixing.
You know, we're doing that now, he needs some people.
I mean.
You can't supervise yourself.
He work himself, and he does.
I'm making a motion.
Hold on, hold on, before we do this, hold on. You, you're gonna pay, nothing against Chad, don't take this for, you're gonna pay Chad that big of a raise and you're only paying a police officer. What?
Fourteen.
Fourteen. This is what happens in a lot of municipalities where they're losing police officers. I know, he's gonna be a supervisor though, that's what we gotta make sure of, and we gotta hire that other person.
Hopefully, as, as we continue financially to get better, everybody can move up. A, a dollar an hour is a pretty good raise, I think.
Do that number revisit it, I guess.
You'll need to, you'll need to adjust the budget accordingly too for that, and add that in there.
Be four a week, hundred, hundred sixty a month, yeah. I just say add two thousand, uh, that'll be, that'll be right there.
Chief gets seventeen.
Yeah, sister chief makes fourteen fifty, the mayor makes fourteen. All right, the motion to.
You gonna pass the cookies, right?
Yeah, I'll bring them up there.
Uh, Eugene proposed, you, you did the proposal to give them a raise.
I gave my.
Put, put that also, and to be the supervisor. Third, fourth, fifth, everybody's gonna read it.
That way he can, he can make a schedule out, just like you said, he can lay out what he's done, before we have made, he can give it to the mayor and we can. He ain't gonna be able to go over and say, well, you know, here's what he's saying, he's done and, that way we know what's going on. I know you already doing a lot, but that'll be something you just.
All right, we're getting there.
I'm still hungry too.
Your wife ain't calling.
His daughter was on the way, was she? One of, one of them was coming up here, I think his daughter.
All right, item fourteen, discuss how he's rent, that should be powered.
So that's what this is Carla?
Yes.
Yes, I did a, this November seventeen to November eighteen, then November eighteen through November nineteen.
What does, what this breaks down to is two hundred and thirty-eight dollars a month.
Um, month of May, why is it zeroed out?
Cause it didn't go over the five thirty-three.
Yeah, but over average of five thirty-three.
This over here on the.
It's just what his bill would have been.
Two thirty-eight. So, to me, it would make sense to do two hundred because his LED lights is gonna lower that even more. So it's probably gonna be right there, then we know we're collecting five hundred dollars a month, no matter what. From rent and power.
We're eating a snack, cause you've had us in here for two hours, um.
I've had y'all here. I think you, uh, signed up for this.
I know I did, uh. We can't do that until after we get a bill in December, cause we just put the lights in them. So future, the LED lights would reduce the fire bill and we would have to look at an adjustment. But right now, they just got installed, so what she's got on here is the true figures of the difference. Now, the month of October, if my memory's serving right, that's when we had, what's her name in there, um. Jessica, thank you, and that charge needs to go down because she utilized those lights. And then also, we had an agreement from her that she would be putting doors in, which is not happening.
She told me that she has talked to, um, Gerald and he's behind. That's what she told me.
So, so what you're saying from this, if I read it correctly, Hadi owes twenty-eight sixty-two?
No, that's just figuring, we didn't have a number to figure on.
No, that's what he owes us.
For the previous fire bill last year.
This gonna be awarded to send somebody a bill for twenty-eight hundred dollars.
That's what's in the contract.
Some of these is went down, some went up.
The only thing that you can change on this is the one for October, we can say that we can knock that off and flatten that out. Before sixty, make it match, that would take it down five hundred dollars. You can add that as a zero right up there. But everything else is what was agreed upon in his contract.
If you took five hundred off of that, you're gonna be below the two hundred dollars a month.
You can't, you can't do that, he owns that whole bill, you cannot say he only able to spend a hundred dollars. A month either, it's because we done this for one year, he owes us that money.
That's, that's, that's about last year's.
Oh no, you can't, it's gonna be hard to calculate that.
That's what I'm saying, why not just come up with a flat rate, we know we're making five hundred a month, six thousand a year. And then he don't have to worry about who's leaving the lights on at night, because that happens a lot. Who's having a holiday market, who's having a birthday party?
So basically, minus the five hundred, he owes us twenty-three sixty-two, correct, that's what you're saying? He owes us twenty-three sixty-two for last year.
Yeah, he needs to pay that.
The mayor's talking about charging two hundred a month for fire from now on next year, plus his three hundred rent. Five hundred a month, which two hundred to be thirty-eight dollars less than average what we agreed to charge from the beginning.
Here's what, you make it into an issue only if out, we're in Iowa fire.
If rates go up.
If the rates go up, so if you say that you're gonna say it's gonna be two hundred flat rate and then all of a sudden they jack our overall rates up. So you could say next year it would be two hundred, then we would have to look at it the following year, if they raise the rates.
T V A's don't wanna do that.
How can I talk about that? I cannot believe you said.
Yeah, that's owned by the members, they don't never put them back in my pocket, but anyway. All going out.
So, but you are right, that is two hundred dollars, you know, into that, so. We could, you know, agree on that, and then next year, you're gonna have to, if they raise rates, you'll have to reevaluate it. But in the meantime, he's gotta pay that, and how long do you give him to get it paid? Cause you didn't, you know, which sort of way to try it.
So you're saying he owes us twenty-three sixty-two and it started January one, we need to go with five hundred a month, and reevaluate in October?
This, this is a physical year from November, he didn't move in in November, so that wouldn't be the format he was right now.
He started tearing stuff, moving stuff in there in, in November.
He agreed, but whenever he started, anyway.
The only one that really would take off would be the two fifty, two forty one.
Well, see, that's not him five hundred.
I give him three hundred and fifty dollars when I quit, so he could pay that too.
Yeah, see, I knocked, I knocked five hundred off, got it down to twenty-three.
I think you need to give him a bill for twenty-three hundred, when he, by whatever date, you pay it.
And then, January one, just charge you five hundred a month, that's power and all, rent, power and everything included. Reevaluate in October, what do you think?
Yeah, I think it's fair.
I'm trying to, I'll probably know, I'm just trying to get this, this up all the road.
Straight up fair.
I don't know how much out of pocket he had for all of the things that he did.
But, I've obviously, I know, we, you know, all that was discussed with him and things, but anyway, and I know he's, he's a business.
Yeah, but we paid for, we paid for air conditioners to be repaired, ceilings to be repaired, that we didn't have, we didn't have to do the ceiling.
And if we start having, and if we start having an issue with.
But that's irrelevant, that was in the contract.
Now, the air conditioners, they never worked.
We voted, we would replace them.
We haven't done that.
So, you just gotta turn, send him a bill for twenty-three hundred, he's gotta have it paid by whatever date you put on there. He can't be waiting six months, you know. And then, we agreed that it'd be five hundred dollars a month payment starting January, is that correct?
That's for rent and power. And his rent is up to date, he's paid his three hundred rent.
All right, um. Our.
Do we need to make a motion on setting the rent and the fire for next year? I'll make a motion and set it, all-inclusive rent, fire, five hundred a month, starting January one, whenever he pays it, twenty twenty.
And it'll be reevaluated.
In October.
October.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Do we, do we have to make an amendment to this, that contract because of that? Because in the original contract, it says three hundred plus the difference in the bill monthly, so we'll have to do an identity.
I'll just state that in the motion.
And then, Hadi will have to sign and agree.
And then also.
But, I'm gonna let you carry it too.
When you want Tammy to carry that too. Cause he don't know my name.
I know. I think you know.
He even says it on the radio, Tammy, don't you know it?
I, I think he's like all the time. I, I think he's like Thomas, he, he understands more than that.
Now, what gets me, I was all about rolling, it was whatever, I'm grinning after he gets in there, it's easy. Bucky.
I will say this for him, he, he has brought, you know, a lot of, people listen to him and, and he's brought a lot of people in.
A lot of publicity, calling ball games, uh, yeah, that brings a lot to the table. Yeah. Not many small towns have a radio station.
I think small towns never heard you do it. You're worth five hundred, Eric.
All right, item number fifteen, the final, uh... Our annual payment to the county commission is due for communication expenditures for the fiscal year two thousand twenty and E M A expenditures for two thousand twenty.
Does that figure into our budget?
It wasn't.
How much is it?
Fifteen, well, actually, three thousand dollars.
If you look on both, there's two separate pages, it's right around eighteen thousand dollars.
Whatever, there's E M A, whatever, and just communication.
Yeah, it's, it's gonna be sixteen, seventeen thousand dollars, it's gonna be added to the budget.
One of them, double what Bear Creek bringing in.
And see, these, these census is over, that's twenty-ten. Can that, can they not refigure that?
They will, here, about... I can see they will.
Because we don't have fifteen hundred people here anymore. I think we're down to, I think we're, like eleven or twelve hundred.
You don't have but three hundred to vote for them. Which would go up there.
If we went back and looked at, see, Bear Creek's only got a thousand and seventy, then we would only be paying ten thousand dollars, cause that's, it's based on that. So we're, we're having to overpay five thousand dollars each year because of the tornado. It ain't gonna happen, we're having to pay it, because that's what they go off the census. No. No. It's based on the percentage of your population that you gotta pay that fee. And it looks like they don't do the census, but they do.
And that's true.
Yeah.
The E M A is just a hell, just a storm.
Here we go.
I'm making a motion to pay it.
We have to pay it.
Yeah, I mean...
It's a good thing.
We, we really got one, y'all probably said that, didn't you?
He's an object creator.
Y'all probably did.
Bursts an object creator.
You get something like that?
No, that was known a long time before me.
You gonna get something back then?
They didn't realize, uh, E M A direct, I went in, that's how long it had to be.
Yeah.
Man, that's, that's bad. I went in in ninety.
You know, everybody gets raised except us. We need to get a raise sometime. It's hard doing this up here with ninety dollars.
Hey, I don't spend money, you wouldn't give me half yours, would you?
What was that?
There's a time that you have to order.
Yes.
Until we can get our police force up, protect you and things like that.
I'm kinda on your election calendar, but I think it's, I didn't wear your march. Yes, I talked to, to Darryl about that already.
So you're gonna add what, six more thousand in budget for that, can you?
For what?
For a hundred dollar raise.
What you said.
I, I'm sorry, I was, you have to...
We'll have to...
But if you, you can do that, there's a, it's on our calendar for election calendar.
For what?
To raise the...
Administrator.
Raise your salary.
No, please, that's on me too.
I'm not ser, I agree with him, until we get our police force up, there ain't no way I'd ask, cause they're underpaid. You take us, I just, no.
Got volunteer firefighters.
Well, no, please, that's on me too, man.
I'm sorry, I was kidding.
Well, I'm doing this for the money, at ninety-one dollars, it really put me on the top.
So Eugene made a motion to pay the Marion County Commission for V M A and the communication.
You said you said that, that was your only...
Second.
I was gonna wait and see if anybody else does.
Still left for making.
Nine seconds, and all in favor? Nobody's in favor, but we're gonna do it.
We said we have one hundred dollar ten. About go with the eighteen thousand, you put that right there. You know what, Tammy? We just spent the eighteen thousand, so that's just like we never had it.
Exactly.
That's seventeen thousand, one hundred dollars.
You know, there is something that we do need to get, maybe look at. I, I went online and started looking at how our, our city limits is all cut up everywhere. We was trying to get some people to come back and add city limits, cause...
I know a business, and he told me he would show me his figures, if we could get him water and help him out with the power, cause he's having a running generator have three phase, and he is bringing it in. He said I'd have no problem that next day, there wouldn't be but one person between him and getting it down there and it squared off the lead, you know, and go back. He's talked to me about that four times. Third day.
Where?
Third day. He said we get him water and power.
Yeah, yeah.
You won't do that.
Yeah, we need to get him in.
Well, he's been telling me, he's told me four times. He said if you, I said, well, if we don't get a power company, well...
Well, ain't many houses, when you're there, that aren't already...
They're the point, and it's the right hand side.
I don't, uh...
That's it, he...
Listen, listen, Gerald, where...
Yeah, I thought.
Motion to...
Motion, second, third.
We need to put it on the agenda.
Yeah, we do.
But we need to do that.
He did tell me, I said, if we done it now, you need to show him what you're bringing in, he said, I don't have a problem. Seriously, he's talking to me about it four times, every time I went down.
Meeting is adjourned.